At this time, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we come down as homeless, we know how. Lord, I truly want to say thank you for being so good to us. You blessed us in so many ways. Thank you for allowing us to live in this land of the free. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to serve your people. Now we ask your guidance upon us, well, Lord, as we speak tonight, direct our tongues, direct our minds, direct our decision. Be with every individual who's assembled here tonight, be with their families, be with our men and women who are fighting in harm's way, and, Lord, let us not be selfish in our prayer, be with those who are less fortunate than we are, those who are sick, those who are shut in. And, Lord, when we leave here tonight, guide us safely to our destination, and we will be so able to give you the glory, give you the honor, and give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. I call the Prattville City Council Tuesday, August 20, 2013, meeting to order. Character trait of the money is gentleness, showing consideration and personal concern for others. At this time, we have approval of the minutes public carried in the city council meeting August 6, 2013. We got a motion to approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes are approved. At this time, comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Any item on tonight's agenda, please come forward. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. But as usual, if I might have a point of privilege, a matter of fact, of about two different points of privilege tonight, if you don't mind. This time, if I might, invite former mayor Jim Byard Jr. to come up to the podium and bring any and all of his family. And as he does come up here, like to speak a little bit, is Jim Byard Jr. is today, was the youngest mayor to take office in Prattville. He was 32 years old at the time. In his second city council term, he fulfilled the role as council president after following the death of Mayor Whitstone in June of 1999. And that time, he took over as mayor. Willie Wood Jr., I believe, took over as council president. If I'm incorrect, please correct me there. Then, anyway, Jim, one reason for going and having what we're having tonight is the unveiling of the mayoral portrait, which, one reason why I sort of chose tonight was that just the Saturday, August 17th, was Jim Byard's birthday. I won't even, I will not even ask how old he was at that point in time. Young, young. Anyway, tonight is about honoring him and unveiling, unveiling his portrait. And before he's, I'm gonna offer the mic to him. You know, it's hard for a politician, once a politician sommelifies your mic, I doubt that he will turn me down from it, but if he would like to come up and have a little mic time, that would be an honor, I think, for all of us. But as he's coming up, I would like to ask him, do you remember ever voting on the purchase of Engine Four, fire truck Engine Four, which happens to be?
Yeah.
That was a long, long time ago, when you were on the city council, and that actually replacement for that one happens to be on tonight's agenda. But if you would like to come up at this point in time, and as an extension, this point of privilege?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you this evening.
Good seeing you.
Hey, I haven't stood right here in a long time. Look at all those people back there in the back, all my family and my work family sitting back there. It kind of looks like old times, except I don't guess anybody's getting a paycheck, are we?
Yeah, yeah. Not from here, though, but I noticed a little portraits, I mean, photographs of the famous...
Yeah, those are some younger folks in there. And you see Willie Woods there, when I started serving in 1992, I was thinking back that, you know, this building was built in 1973, so this building's celebrating its 40th anniversary. And I served, was pleased and tremendously honored to serve the citizens for 19 years here. So I spent 19 years in this room, and I was thinking, Mr. President Wood, when I started serving, you've heard me say this before, but your dad would sit out there, you know, Willie Wood Senior, every Tuesday council meeting night, and would make sure things were being run properly here. And I'm sure that Mr. Wood is looking down on you, smiling. You know, I was thinking about in 19 years of the very positive things that happened in this room, things like voting on the bond issue for the golf course, things like that has changed Prattville, things like voting on economic development for Medline, for Frostley, you know, for Bass Pro, things that, as I travel around the state in my new duties, people know Prattville for. And then the tough times, when we stood here with, you know, Chief Wadsworth's back there, and we stood here discussing the death, subsequent, I guess, disappearance and subsequent death of Shannon Palk back in August, August 17th, 2001, you know, dealing with the ADECA director then, and Colonel Murphy from the troopers, and the EMA director Brock Long, and after the, after the February 2008 tornadoes, the tough times and the good times that went on in this room. But my family, Beverly is here, and my in-laws, and my mom and brother, and of course, our children, Mary, Lisa, and James, and Richard, who, you know, grew up here at City Hall to their time. And then my extended work family, you know, Jamie, and Gina Smith, and Stephanie, and Chief Wadsworth's back there, and EC, and then you've still got a few, Lisa Thrash, that keeps you out of trouble, and Robbie Anderson, and Kelly Cook was our special events director. But I certainly am honored to stand here, and I saw, I have to mention, my good buddy and my friend and my mentor, Mayor Price, he was my high school principal, and I am doubly honored that my picture will hang up there next to Mayor Price's. He's not only my neighbor, but he's, he and Julie are both very close friends. So I guess I should close with that. Most of the times in my new job, when I'm behind a podium at a city council meeting, the mayor's getting a check, but I don't have a check for you tonight, Mayor. So I apologize. I didn't, I didn't bring anything from Montgomery.
Well, a handshake'll do. Handshake'll do, and then at this time, if you guys will, if you will unveil your portrait to the world, I think it'd be an honor. But as you are walking up there, I will ask, you know, just a little mention about a CDBG grant, Field of Dreams, College Heights.
I don't know, the dust is so, I'm looking, that's, that's smart, isn't it? They got a plane, they got a plane brand that are the CDBG that we're turning in yesterday, and I'm doing it for today. And then another city in town, it's got a CDBG that I don't know where it's from.
Well...
We're gonna do this, and we'll get out of here.
Wanted to keep the dust off.
Hold on. Hold on. Great, come on here, let's get one, I don't want to disturb them, we're in the studio. I want to read, but I think I might have one of those. Hey, what, if you're trying to look better or not? Are you gonna park it for me or... We're parked outside here, it's in the line of... All right. Play four, play four again. I'm gonna do it again. Happy birthday.
I tell you what, they could say a lot. So there has been a lot of, lot of business done between these walls, and I'm just glad to say that I've been a part of it. The city of Prattville, I think, is doing well today because of all the hard work that we all have given to this city. And, but anyways, we move right on along, I, there again, want to say thank you, Jim Byard, for coming down tonight, and, and Godspeed. At this other, at this point, also, I'd like, another point of personal privilege there is I asked former councilperson Tom Miller to come up. Now, in this case, he does have a check.
I'll wait a minute till they sort of move out. Good evening. It's a real pleasure to be back before this austere body, and I'm gonna tell you, you are certainly a good-looking bunch compared to days that I was on the council.
I could, never mind.
And I'm, I'm not here to tell you how, how proud I am of what I've been seeing in terms of following the work of the council and the mayor, but I think you guys are doing the right thing at the right time, and I can't tell you how much of appreciation I have for that, having, I guess, been an alumnus of this group. And really, when you called for the vote, I was sitting out there, and I accidentally, my hands started to go up, and I thought, oh, nope. But truthfully, I hadn't been down here since November, when I think the swearing-in ceremony took place. So it's a real pleasure to see friends and folks again. What we're here for tonight is representing the Otter County Medical Society, and I have my colleagues, Dr. Martin Wabanga and Dr. Lee Carter, who are here with me to make a presentation to the city on behalf of the Otter County Medical Society. And I'm going to ask Dr. Wabanga to take the podium in that regard.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Joyce, would you mind to come on up, and Lauren, and Neil? Thank you, Mayor Gillespie, and members of the city council for allowing us, Dr. Miller, Dr. Carter, and myself, to make this presentation on behalf of our Otter County Medical Society. We were excited to hear that there was a possibility of donating to the health and welfare of our young people of our city and county by contributing funds for benches at the newly-built splash park at Pratt Park. I have to acknowledge that, once we found out as a family unit that that was the reality, possibly in the making, that we hit the computer many times over and tried to get as many votes for the Coca-Cola contest to get the $100,000 to Prattville, which eventually was donated. As a board of directors of the Otter County Medical Society, we are delighted to make a $1,500 contribution to fund those benches at the splash park for our citizens to enjoy. On a more sad note, on August 2nd this month, we unexpectedly lost one of our own Otter County Medical Society members, Dr. Kevin Andrew Cody. Dr. Cody was a family man, a community man, a great family physician, is, and will continue to be dearly missed by his family, his community, patients, and his peers, us. With that in mind, our society would like to make the donation of $1,500 for the splash pad benches in memory of Dr. Kevin Andrew Cody.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Can I? I'd like to ask Dr. Tom Miller to say a few words as well.
And I wanted to share just a real quick story with you. We were sad and losing Kevin, and I, you know, I saw him at church, and I saw him as go down for communion, and I saw him being an usher, and I just really have always held him in high regard, but medical specialties are getting a lot more tight in terms of certification. And I'm an OB-GYN, and actually, I had a written certification back in 1989, and for some reason, they decided I needed to do another written test, not just me, but nationally. It's all that upgrade, you know, pharmacists are now doctoral prepared, nurse practitioners doctoral prepared, so it's part of that whole move. And I actually had my written test this morning, took it on Eastern Boulevard at the testing center. And I walked in, and the woman registered me, and this, that, and the other. Most of the folks taking tests were the younger kids getting their GMAT test, graduate medical test, whatever. And she saw I'm a doctor, and what board am I taking, OB-GYN, and she said, "Do you, do you know a good internist? I need a new doctor." And I said, "Well, no, not really, I, you know, I use a family medicine doc," and this, that, and the other. And she said, "Well, did you know Dr. Cody?" And I said, "Yes, I did, and I knew him personally." And she said, "He was my doctor," and tears welled up in her eyes, and she said, "I really can't tell you what a fine man he was, and what a great physician he was." And she shared two quick stories with me. She said, "He actually, when my mother..." And I asked her for permission to share these details, because it was just a big coincidence that we had this planned for tonight. And she said, "My mother had a stroke, she was double amputee because of diabetes, and Dr. Cody actually made house calls." And how often do you see that this day in time with a physician? And she said, "You know, I ran into him another time in Walmart, and I was between jobs without insurance." And he said, "Pat, see, I haven't seen you in a long time. What, what's going on?" And she said, "Well, I don't have insurance, I lost my job." And he said, "I'll see you when you have insurance, and I'll see you when you don't have insurance. Make an appointment, come back." And those two short stories, I thought, told the story of what that man was all about, and what he brought to this community, his family, his church, and I just wanted to share that with you. I think, I think God was probably staging all this for me to have that experience this morning in such a happenstance way. So, I just want to thank, thank all of you. I also would like to introduce Lee Carter. Lee Carter's the, our Otterville representative, and actually, Dr. Wabanga's president, I'm vice president, and you're, I'm secretary treasurer, you're vice president, so you want to share a real quick thing, then we'll be out of here.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this wonderful group. I represent the great big city of Otterville, obviously, but we appreciate the opportunity to come speak before you tonight, and I think it was an important thing, and a wonderful, wonderful physician. But we also are gonna share some money with my little town, and they don't need benches, we need a facility. They need facilities, facilities for real. We're gonna spend the money in Otterville on a restroom facility, actually, out by the pavilion, so you don't have to walk two miles to get to it in our park. But they wanted me to share that with you this evening, but again, we appreciate you letting us be here tonight and, and honor a great physician in this community. So thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
You're the family, Joyce, and you guys.
Did we send a check, sir? Yes. I put you out.
Thank you, Dr. Tom Miller, it's good to see you back in here, and as I move to the back of the room, I would like to say that I was very honored to, to know Dr. Cody also. Saw him quite a few times out on the golf course, and he, as I move around the state or other areas, I've always been asking, what's, I've always heard a lot, what's going on in Prattville, wants to know what's, what makes Prattville special, and I'll tell him it's the people, and it's, and it's people like Dr. Cody and his family, and, and I guess, you know, this is one way that his name will live on forever. So I do certainly appreciate that, and I think it's very awarding to, to the community, you know, to know that, that his family does care that much, and as many people that have gone through the splash pads recently, his name will, will definitely be seen whenever these benches are put up. But as we move along into, into our city business, just talk a little bit about resolution number two, part of the consent agenda is appointment of Dr. Ed Mullins to the water board. I have personally spoken with him, and he is ready, willing, and able, council sees fit to move forward on that. And also on resolution number three, that was part of the ADM grant that gives us some monies for different various recycling products, projects, and part of that's for the city and some of that's for the county, but if you guys can move forward on that also. Resolution six of our, actually, I'm sorry, I need to back up just a little bit, on our regular agenda, resolutions two, three, and four, I request that you do pass these, but highly recommend that this body revisit the council mandated personnel hiring approval resolution in the very near future. Those three that I'm talking about are to fill some vacancies that we have in, in our personnel staffing, but if you could move forward on that, and then, again, revisit that, the hiring approval resolution. Resolution six is the big expenditure that, you know, was talked about a little bit earlier when I was joking around with the former mayor, you know, was, did he vote on this one, and, but the Engine Four, Engine Four is approximately 19 years old, been in service for 19 years, has been answering emergency calls throughout the city. Nineteenth anniversary, as I mentioned earlier, it was purchased in the fiscal year 94, 95, budget cycle at a cost of $250,000. Just goes to show, talking about inflation there. It was previously in service at Fire Station Two on Fourth Street and labeled as Engine Two. In 2009, Prattville Fire Department took delivery of a new fire engine, which became Engine Two, and at that time, the old engine became Engine Four and was moved to Station One on Main Street. This fire engine has made approximately 15,800 calls for the city of Prattville. I know several firefighters are here tonight, one, Michael Whaley, has told me that he has been on it numerous times. It's accumulated 128,344 miles, which equates to 12,554 hours on it. Engine Four is not a reserve fire apparatus, this is a first responder engine, and its age is an issue. Takes about a year to order and take delivery of a new fire engine, and if we prepay, it saves us approximately $10,800. In order for us to preserve our ASO rating, make sure fire department operations are at the level our citizens have come to need and expect, hope the council will pass resolution number six to, to buy this new fire engine and place E4 into reserve service. So at that time, when it does go into reserve service, some of the needed additional maintenance that it requires because of the age and the mileage, to put it into the reserve situations would certainly be appreciated. Our department head budget hearings are scheduled for August 30th at 3:00 PM in these chambers. Hope everybody here can, will be able to join us. I also enjoyed noticing that our Purple Heart City flag is flying out front of our City Hall, which is part of the resolution that you passed at the last council meeting. Couple of light-headed notes here also, is Way Off Broadway Theater is currently running performances of collected stories, so join me in going to see what I'm sure is gonna be another great production for our Way Off Broadway. Labor Day is September the 2nd, no garbage or trash will be collected on that day. And one of the final things on my mayoral report here is that August 23rd is a very special day to me. It's, actually, comes the 23rd, is actually be my 33rd wedding anniversary, and noticing my wife was able to come to this meeting tonight, and just want to say thank you for doing that. She, she's been a very big supporter of mine. Now, during the last election, I don't know if she voted for me or not, but she has been a very big supporter. But, but with that all said, Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you. At this time, we have a report from council and special committees, Council Striper.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, the budget review process began with the wastewater committee and the sanitation committee at our meeting last week.
Council Brown?
No, sir.
Council Sterns?
No, sir.
Council Chambers?
No, sir.
Council Bowles?
Yes, sir. The fire committee would like to see us move forward on resolution number five and resolution number six. Thank you.
Council Boone?
Yes, sir. Urban Management Committee met yesterday to begin the budget process as well.
Thank you all for your committee's work and diligence to work ahead of time, so that we will hopefully be able to move forward with the budget here on the 30th and get this budget passed. Thank you very much. At this time, we have a report on the status of the city finances from my finance director.
Good evening. The packet that you've got in front of you, the first sheet in that packet is the revenue report, that is for the general fund and capital projects fund. On the right, you will see that for the year, year-to-date, we are up 7.06% or $1.9 million over last year. There are a couple of those line items that are lagging behind. As you'll see, for the revenue side, we're 75% through the year. Fines and forfeitures are at 67.5%. Alcohol taxes at 71.7%, and tobacco taxes at 67.25%. Obviously, those are pretty close, in line with the 75%, but they are lagging a little bit behind. Everything else, as you can see, is over 75%, which is very, very positive. The next sheet in the packet is the tax breakdown comparison, showing the different taxes and how those compare to the same month last year. The next sheet in your packet is the July unaudited expense by departments. Most everybody is right in line where we are for expenses, it's eight, we're 83.33% through the year because of accruals. As you will see, most everybody is right in line. You will see that on judicial, they are a little bit, they are over their percentage, they're at 100.5% for their budget, and that's mainly due to increased costs on the jail contract from using the jail contract, the jail services with the county, and that's gonna be adjusted for next year's budget. Most everybody else is right in line, then. The next sheet you will see is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. As you will see, we have received 81.43% of our budgeted revenues, and obviously, we're 75% through the year on revenues. Expenses, we've spent 79.43% of our budget, and as far as expenses, we are 83.33% through the year, so that's very positive. Same situation with the sanitation enterprise fund, they are running at 75.63% of their budgeted revenues and 74.07% of their budgeted expenses. The next sheet in the packet is the bank balances report for July 2011, 12, and 13. You will see a drastic increase in those balances from July 2011, the balance of all city accounts was $779,570. As of July 30th, 2013, that balance is $12,646,000. A couple of things of note on the bank balances side that occurred after this, just so, to kind of give you a heads up. Last week, we deposited, we opened and deposited $700,000 into a general fund reserve account to segregate those funds, allow those to start building. Also, we opened, opened a capital equipment reserve account. The theory behind that is anytime we sell a vehicle or a piece of equipment that's not in one of the enterprise funds, those funds go into that reserve account to build for future purchases of equipment. It's essentially like a lease concept, except we're leasing from ourselves, so you don't have to pay the interest. We've also opened up the lodging fee account, obviously, we'll start getting that money in this next month, so that account is ready to be funded for that. The next sheet in your packet is the accounts payable and debt balances. Again, you will see a drastic change from July 2011 to July 2013. Accounts payable and debt balance as of July 2011 was $60,011,479. hundred seventy-nine dollars. July 31, 2013, that balance was fifty million three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Couple of things that have changed since this report. We have paid off the pumper truck, which was three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and four thousand dollars, and the SunTrust leach, which was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. However, we did borrow the money for the sludge field through the wastewater enterprise fund, which is nine hundred thousand dollars. Those will all show up in the next report.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Mosley? Thank you. At this time, we are moving to our agenda. We have a consent agenda tonight, four items. Resolution Number One is to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordinate abatement per Title I, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. Resolution Number Two is to appoint Dr. Edwin Mullins to the Water Works Board. Resolution Three is to authorize the mayor to enter into an Alabama recycling fund grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Resolution Number Four is to set up a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordinate abatement per Title Eleven, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five as amended. We have four items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to place these items on a consent agenda? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Striplin. Be in a discussion. All in favor placing these items on the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Items one through four have been placed on a consent agenda. We'd be in a discussion on any of these four items on the consent agenda. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Consent agenda has been adopted. We're moving to our agenda. Resolution Number One is to grant a special retail more than thirty days license to apply Seven Services Southeast LP doing business as Courtyard. Council Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Apple Seven Services Southeast LP doing business as Courtyard Prattville has obtained a business located at twenty-six twenty Legends Parkway in Prattville, Alabama, which is a hotel. And whereas the owner of said business has applied for a special retail more than thirty day license, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a special retail more than thirty days license for the business located at twenty-six twenty Legends Parkway in Prattville, Alabama, to Apple Seven Services Southeast LP doing business as Courtyard Prattville, Alabama. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Council Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. We'd be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This item passes. Resolution Number Two, to authorize the hiring of one athletic director to fill a budgeted vacancy in the leisure services department at an annual cost not to exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars for salary and benefits. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the leisure services department has a need to hire one athletic director due to a vacancy, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed fifty-three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position for the leisure services department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to fifty-three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one athletic director, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, leisure service department, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Sterns. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. Resolution Number Three, to start the rise of hiring of one police officer to fill a budgeted vacancy in the police department at an annual cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars for salary and benefits. Council Chambliss, will you read it?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire one police officer due to a vacancy, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for salary and benefits, whereas this is a budgeted position in the police department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one police officer, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, police department, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Council Chambliss, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Sterns. We'd be in discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes also. Resolution Number Five is to release funds for the purchase of one eight-by-five-by-twenty V-nose cargo trailer from TNT Outfitters LLC for the fire department at a cost not to exceed nine thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Council, Council Bowles, will you read it, please?
Point of privilege? We skipped, we skipped number four.
I'm sorry.
You mean to read this and then go back?
You may, you may.
Whereas there's a need for one eight-and-a-half-foot-by-twenty V-nose cargo trailer for the fire department, and whereas said trailer is available through TNT Outfitters LLC for nine thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed six thousand six hun, sorry, nine thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to TNT Outfitters LLC, and the funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2013 budget line item, Fire Department capital outlay.
I so move. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Boone, be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. We'll go back to item number four. Number four is to authorize the hiring of one Secretary III to fill a budgeted vacancy in the urban management department at an annual cost not to exceed forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for salary and benefits. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the urban management department has the need to hire one Secretary III due to a vacancy, and whereas the city council has adopted a resolution requiring council authorization to fill vacant positions, and whereas the budgeted position needs to be reclassified from Secretary II to Secretary III due to additional job responsibilities, and whereas the annual cost will not exceed forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said position is reclassified from Secretary II to Secretary III. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one Secretary III, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line items, urban management department, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the human resources department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. We'd be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. Resolution Number Six is to release funds for the purchase of one E-one class A pumper and equipment from Sunbelt Fire through the HGAC Purchasing Cooperative, contract number FS twelve dash eleven, for the fire department at a cost not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Council Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one E, one class A pumper and equipment in the fire department, and whereas Resolution Book 2013, page zero eight three, the city council authorizes entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement with Houston Galveston Area Council, H-GAC, and whereas the pumper and equipment are available through the HGAC contract, FS twelve dash eleven, from Sunbelt Fire at the cost not to exceed five hundred thousand, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Sunbelt, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2013 budget line item, Fire Department capital outlay. I so move.
We have a motion from Council Bowles, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Chambliss, be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. Number seven is an ordinance to surplus two vehicles from the wastewater department. Council Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. If the vehicles listed below are hereby declared surplus of wastewater department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department, two thousand and one Ford Taurus, nineteen eighty-nine Ford F-600, be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicles on govdeals.com and that the proceeds be deposited into the wastewater enterprise fund. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Council Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. In order for this item to be considered tonight, rules must be suspended unanimously. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
We have a motion to suspend by Council Chambliss, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Bowles. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. This item is open for discussion. Any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this ordinance passes. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. We have one item, although from the floor. Mr. Council Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas on the twentieth day of August 2013, the citizens of the city of Prattville are requesting an attorney general's opinion to determine if the city can accept the donation of property from a sitting council member. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby request the Honorable Luther Strange, Attorney General for the State of Alabama, to give his opinion as to whether the city of Prattville can accept the donation of property from a sitting council member. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor by Council Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. This item coming from the floor tonight also requires that the rules be suspended unanimously in order to be, be hurried tonight. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Council Boone, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Brown. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Now this item is open for discussion. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask to abstain from this vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Any abstention? One abstention, this item passes. At this time, if we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, make comments on any other item, this is your opportunity. Please come forward. Saying, Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. Just a couple. Working with Chief Thompson's, we're working along, working on a status report on our weeded lots, because as you're very aware of, is that practically every council meeting that I can remember in the distant past, there's always been a weeded lot on the agenda. But anyway, we're working to have status reports on those to be, to be brought up on, so we can pass that along to the council and see how they're moving along. And going back to the report that Finance Director Doug Mosley brought before us, a couple of the items that he brought forth was talking about our fines and forfeitures are down, alcohol taxes are down, tobacco taxes are down, overall, you know, revenue is up though, but it sounds to me like the population of Prattville is getting healthier and abiding by the laws a lot better than they have in the past. So, that's how I'm reading that report. But on a more, September the second, it's Labor Day. Hope to see everybody in America's favorite park, Pratt Park, for the Service League BBQ there. And thank you for all the hard work, both the council and the department heads and employees here. Thank you.
Council Striplin?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, I'd like to welcome Mr. Walter Love as the interim director of the sanitation department. We're glad to have you in that position and appreciate your assistance. Thank you.
Council Brown?
No, sir.
Council Sterns?
No, sir.
Council Chambliss?
No, sir.
Council Bowles?
No, sir.
Council Boone?
No, sir.
With that being said, again, as always, let me thank all of you all for coming tonight. Thank the city employees for what you do. Mr. Love, we do wish you well. We wish everyone well. As steady as you leave, continue to keep all of us in your prayers and those who are less fortunate than we are. Thank you very much. Next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September third, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.